Wheel Talk Seattle.
Yo.
How's it going, Matt?
Good. How about you, Colin? Thanks for turning this music up.
Oh, turn it up?
Yeah.
Alright, we can't play too much because Ludacris might find out.
Fair enough. Alright, well, this is us.
Wheel Talk Seattle, back at you, live from Copper Tree.
Copper Tree. Yep, and here today, we got, well, it's me, Matt, Colin's here.
Colin, what up, guys?
And our guest from The Urbanist, Ryan Packer.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Alright, man, thanks for, thanks for being here with us.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome to the show.
First guest of 2019.
Glad to be here.
Good, good. So, so, uh, just before we were starting, we were getting a little bit established, and we understand that you work at the, work for The Urbanist, and...
Oh, wait, no, tell me, how did you guys meet? Sorry, we got an origin story for you guys, but we gotta find out, how did you meet?
How did me and I?
Matt, no, yeah, like, what happened? Matt texted me, he's like, dude, we got a guest on The Urbanist, so...
I was pretty stoked on that.
Yeah, but how did that happen?
Well, well, I-
Twitter, hint.
Yes, yes, I started following and liking Ryan's material on there. And then Ryan-
One thing led to another.
Cool.
Well, I found out there was a bike podcast, so I had to invite myself on, and apparently...
Sweet, well, thanks for coming.
I'm glad you did.
And other than that, what's the origin? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So-
We're good at segues, really good at segues here.
Working it.
So, cool.
Well, I'll start, yeah, so, since you're from The Urbanist, do you want to tell us a little bit about The Urbanist?
Sure, so, uh, we're, uh, online publication, been around for about four years now, uh, focused on urban issues in Seattle particularly, uh, housing, transportation, those sorts of issues, so, um, we publish content every single day, we also have, uh, walking tours in the summertime, and, uh, meetups every month where you can meet a specific speaker who's relevant to Seattle right now. City council members of almost all of them have been, uh, stopping by.
Awesome, I didn't know about that.
Nice.
That's amazing. Um, so I saw on The Urbanist that they're really involved, like, one of the things is engagement. So I see how the monthly things and the tours and the walking tours, um, can promote engagement with people in there, yeah?
Sure, yeah, definitely, those are all parts of it, and just in terms of just keeping people apprised of when is a good time for people to contact their representatives about issues that are really important to people who care about cities.
Hmm, timing is, uh, pretty important around here, isn't it?
Exactly, action alerts are a big part of what we do in terms of now's the time to contact the city council, or the King County Council, or what, what, what have you.
Excellent.
So you said that there was, um, that they focus on transit and housing a lot, um, so what are some of the, some of the goals, or some of the, like, mission or vision that you could share about The Urbanist? Something that maybe resonates with you the most?
Sure, sure, so, I mean, our vision is pretty much, uh, focused on ensuring that, um, people first, transportation is prioritized, so obviously not single occupancy vehicles, um, and in terms of housing, ensuring that, uh, the benefits of density, um, are able to, to come to, to more areas. Uh, I think one of the agreed upon, uh, facets of, of The Urbanist is that density is generally a good thing, and that, um, and that we want to, uh, encourage that from both a climate-centric perspective, and also just because of a livability, um, perspective, uh, but also sort of that equity, uh, historical perspective in terms of how we have the, the land use that we have created in Seattle in terms of the history of, of redlining and single-family zones and, and all those things in terms of, um, making an equitable city. It's really important to reexamine that, and, uh, that applies to transportation as well in terms of, uh, making sure that everyone has equitable options.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hmm, cool.
Equitable, that's awesome.
Yeah, it seems like things are variable by neighborhood too, and that can be a huge challenge, I think. I mean, we were just talking right before the podcast about how Ballard was excluded for a little bit, um, either on purpose or by choice, or however that went down, but that's really interesting too, I think.
Definitely, definitely, and, you know, the neighborhoods south of I-90 sort of have historically been totally ignored, and that's definitely the case when talking about bike infrastructure, as we're gonna get into here.
Absolutely, cool, yeah, I find it fascinating where, um, where the, where the resources will go, and you're explaining how, uh, Sound Transit, the light rail's going out towards, to the east after, towards Bellevue, because they're paying for it also, and so they require that they get some, uh, some of the benefits from it.
Yeah, exactly, the way that we, the way that we've designed our, our, uh, light rail system is not exactly focused on ensuring that the highest ridership areas get transit, it's just ensuring that all of the system gets served, which is a little bit of a different goal. Uh, and so that's the outcomes you end up having with that.
Right, it'll be a little disparity, so maybe that's why we got like 20 years out until Ballard gets any, any train.
Just one station at that point.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Just like Capitol Hill, right?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Interesting. So, what are some of the, some of the things, you were saying that, like, an equitable approach to, um, transit and urban planning, uh, what are some of the barriers, like, getting in the way from that happening? I see that you guys are the voice, or providing a voice for issues such as that, so what are some of the things that you come in contact with that could, like, stop it or slow it down?
Uh, so are we asking in terms of, uh, maybe bike projects, or overall transit, or...
Let's do bike.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, the barrier there is really the status quo in terms of, of what, uh, projects get selected, and I think we're gonna get into that a little bit in terms of how the, the money is prioritized, but, um, the most frequent, uh, reason that is cited for not building bike infrastructure is, you know, traffic. And so, we're looking at the transportation system we have now, and trying to make decisions on how to change that, and frequently, very high-use corridors where bicycle infrastructure would be very useful, uh, runs into traffic complaints, or, um, you know, resistance from Seattle Department of Transportation in terms of, oh, well, if you have a bike facility there, taking out a lane, you're gonna, uh, run into, uh, hundreds of seconds of, of vehicle delay, and that's not acceptable, you know, we used to have a, a standard, um, of level of service, which is sort of the 1950s-era transportation standard, grading how long people are waiting at intersections. That's the only standard really that, that had been used for a long time. How long are people gonna have to wait to get through a red light, basically?
Okay, but that, that doesn't factor in bus or bus transit, or is, this is like focused solely on people driving, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the bus is gonna be in there, but that's, that's how we designed our system, but, but, um, but that's kind of the driver for decades of transportation, is how long are people gonna have to wait? Not factoring in how many people are in the different modes, and you're trying to separate how many people could actually be moved if you had a bike lane, if you had a bus lane, if you had a wider sidewalk, or what, but that's sort of been the main resistor to, um, to equity. Uh, Rainier Avenue is sort of the direct bike, bike, like, route. If you're gonna have a bike route in southeast Seattle, you're gonna have it on Rainier.
Oh, yeah, we've heard that on this podcast before, actually.
Yeah.
For sure, I mean, yeah, anybody that's ridden it.
But all the modeling they come back with says, oh, we need to have a route for trans, uh, for freight, and then the number seven's gonna come a rapid ride, and so you end up with these models that show, we can't, there's no room. I, I remember Estad came back with a, a schematic, uh, sort of a layout drawing for what a Rainier Avenue bike lane could look like, um, that they were just showing us to sort of demonstrate, and it was, it was the, the two, um, it was two lanes in each direction, one of which was a freight lane, and the freight and bus lane, which was the same lane, it was a freight and bus lane, was, was the only thing protecting the bike lane from the general purpose traffic. And so that was the only idea they could do, was, oh, maybe the freight will protect people on bikes.
Yeah, huh, so that's the protection.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so it would seem then that there's some idea that they need to move people and move products too, um, but just, uh, how they measure how it's getting moved, it would seem that they're measuring, as you were saying, uh, wait times at traffic lights, uh, compared to how many people are moving through here at a time? Is that so? So, it seems though that, yeah, if, if we were to, like, measure it differently, perhaps there would be some different outcomes or stuff like that, but also, it would also be like, there has to be like some priority over, like, which mode do they prefer, or do they prioritize doing that?
Yeah, well, ultimately, it comes down to how many people are you moving, if you, if you do judge it by that, then, a bus lane, a bike lane, those are gonna perform very well in terms of a single lane of general perfect, purpose traffic. And so the city council is moving toward, uh, an alternate definition of what level of service means, but even, you know, as of right now, it's still, and it's gonna for a long time, because you're still talking about, about network delay, and what you do on one street affects other streets, it's still gonna, it's gonna really seep in, it's still be seeping into the department's mentality, they're just not gonna use level of service as a term.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
No.
About that. So, um...
How does, oh, so we've talked on this podcast before about, uh, what's going on in Eastlake, we attended a meeting about some of the planned transit infrastructure, how does that differ from what's going on in Rainier? Um- Cause I, I mean, I heard a couple key points, meaning like rapid ride coming through and...
Yeah, that's a good point, um, so Eastlake is obviously a key bike corridor, and the city seems to recognize that. Um, they are getting a lot of resistance to bike lanes in Eastlake due to removal of parking, uh, even though there's a high volume of off-street parking in the neighborhood, uh, which is what their studies showed. Uh, but they went back to the drawing board and said, okay, what happens if we look at any other options? And they had a whole list, and it showed that there really aren't any other options, like diverting people off of Eastlake for a while is not gonna, uh, improve safety, and it's not really gonna add much parking back in.
Yep.
And so, uh, on Eastlake, I guess, we are holding steady, so that might be a, a good, uh, source of good news right now, but it seems like we are gonna get those lanes. I think the thing about Eastlake is that there literally is no alternative, so you can't really-
Right.
There's no, it's not-
Right.
It's not gonna work.
Yeah. Yeah, Colin and I went to one of those meetings.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun to see-
It was.
The process in action, so to speak.
And to see where everybody's like, like, what they envisioned for it. And so, of course, like you were saying, Eastlake's gonna be used no matter what, because it's the most direct route. Even if they divert it somewhere else, people are still gonna ride Eastlake.
Yeah.
So, how do they balance, like, things are eventually inevitable, gonna happen anyways, with, um, pleasing everybody, which is impossible? I don't know, I don't expect you to answer, but if you want.
No, I mean, I kinda wondered too, I mean, we're talking about ways we measure, you know, the, measure things, and I mean, has like topography, or just like the, the, in Rainier, Rainier especially too, it's just like, that's a pleasant way to get from a lot of places to another, a lot of places. I mean, as far as like a thoroughfare goes, or you're in other cities, and these are like prime, it's like, no, this is the, we wanna encourage people to bike here, how do we do that? Just because, I mean, can you, I mean, are they measuring topography is the question?
It definitely factors in, um, but, in a place like Eastlake, that was one of the reasons why-
Right.
The alternates were rejected, basically, uh, and so, but, when you have a, a neighborhood like the Rainier Valley, where it's really the only route, and it is a huge freight corridor-
Ah, yes.
Uh, that is, ends up being what they hide behind, so, um, but it's, it's all a matter of, of, uh, sort of, I mean, obviously prioritization, but-
Yeah.
But in terms of-
Well, I mean, I wonder if, like, drastic solutions may be more in, in, uh, measure for that? Like, it seems like Eastlake, the next logical step would be to upgrade to higher-density transit mobility, but in like Rainier Valley, it might make more sense to have an off-road path, kind of like to have along, in the arboretum where it's, you know, street adjacent, but it allows for more mobility.
Yeah, and so the alternate, uh, proposal, well, it's already been built, is the Rainier Valley Greenway, which is a very circuitous neighborhood, street path, and, you know, technically goes all the way from basically I-90 down to, uh, Rainier Beach, but most people don't ride that whole thing, if you, there's some, some streets you get to where it seems like a sheer cliff that you're biking up.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's so easy to get lost if you're not familiar with that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I mean, I bike through, I get lost every time, and I bike through there often.
Right, right, it's gotta follow the signs, it's not intuitive, it's kinda just-
So hard to read.
No.
Anyway.
But by miles, that thing is the, the most bike infrastructure that southeast Seattle's gonna get for a long time, so...
Sorry, guys.
Yeah.
Um, alright.
Gotta have track.
Huh? No, no, totally on track.
Always on track.
Yep, so, man, so, I wanna know a little bit more about you, so we can get to know you a little bit before we could jump into our, all of our to, a couple topics we got. So, how did you get involved with, uh, The Urbanist?
Sure, so, um, I've been working for a restaurant company, uh, over by the Space Needle, I live, uh, living Capitol Hill. I've been working for a restaurant company by the Space Needle for about a decade now, and I, uh, can't take the A to work because, or from home from work mainly, because it's unreliable and, uh, takes a million years and is totally packed, so-
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So I started walking to work, you know, about 10 years ago, also I was poor, so that, that also contributed. Um, and so, uh, but that's Denny Way, and it's, uh, really, really terrible to walk on.
Oh, yeah.
And so that sort of turned me into someone who's like, hey, why, why does pedestrian infrastructure suck in so many places? And, uh, and so that, um, one day, my, my friend, uh, who's involved in transit advocacy in Tacoma actually was up for the day, and I was like, oh, we're gonna go to, I'm gonna go to this meetup with this group called The Urbanist, do you wanna come with me? And, uh, I went and tagged along, and it was really impressive what they were doing. Uh, and that was around the same time that, uh, we had opened Second Avenue Bike Lane, but I wasn't, I wasn't a cyclist person, I was like, uh, yeah, okay. Uh, I, I had a bike awhile, for awhile, it broke, and I didn't replace it, and it's like, cause I live on Capitol Hill, and I was always like, it's so hard to, to bike around for, you know, like, you know, go down to the water, and then decide you wanna to bike all the way back up to Capitol Hill.
Yeah.
It's just so hard to like, uh, I don't wanna do that.
Yep.
Um, but Second Avenue opened, and then we launched our city-owned bike share program. And so, and even before that, I was like, bike share, I don't know about that, but, um, it's like, a couple days before we launched it, and I was like, this sounds really cool, so I signed up, and so I was able to use it on the first day, and then I ended up, um, clocking the, the most number of trips that anyone has ever clocked on Pronto.
You did, no way.
Wow.
And that will, that will hold.
It's like 2000-
Yeah.
2030 or something like that.
Nice.
Holy crap, you serious? 2030?
Cause it was a hundred bucks a year, and you get unlimited 30-minute trips, so it was just so great, and I, I would use that to, like, to and from my office job, instead of walking on Denny, it was great. And I, I got really used to it, even though Fourth Avenue is not great, and Second Avenue, at that time, was just a bike lane, but, uh, you know, a paint bike lane, but it was a lot better than walking on Denny every, every day.
Yeah, whoa, a success story from Pronto, I love it.
Yeah.
This is rare, this is great, this is great. So-
So what happened when Pronto went away? What did you do? Back on foot?
Kept walking, kept walking, was like, when are we gonna get bike share again? Uh, there was a, there was a while, there was a hope that we would be able to expand it. Um, we, we had that, that brief period where we thought we might get a Bevegan, Bevegan system, um, from Montreal, and I tested that bike, and it was actually really freaking awesome. Uh, it's almost more powerful than the current jump bikes.
Wow, cool.
And, uh, but that didn't work out, uh, cause Lisa Herbal and, uh, Ed Murray killed it, so-
Yeah, okay, I was gonna ask you why that happened, but-
And then, uh, um, and then I just, uh, started walking again, and, and then we got, uh, Spin and OFO and-
You tried them all.
Yeah, uh, I did, uh, and so I just, yeah, I got back on that, and then those all dropped out, and then we got electric Limes, and now we're at jump bikes, it's been an interesting journey.
Okay.
So many questions.
I know. I kinda wanna talk about bike share right now.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, um, oh, by the way, if you could go right into it.
Go right there.
Yeah, that's where everybody could hear you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, which do you prefer?
Yeah, okay. What's your favorite one, and what did you like most about Pronto? And then we'll start from there. Yeah.
Uh, so, for Pronto, I mean, it was really just a, it, it happened to be that, that all the stations were pretty much where I wanna hang out, so, there were a lot of complaints about the stationery, and I totally understand that.
Yep.
Um, but it just happened that I spent a lot of time in Capitol Hill, and Belltown, and Pioneer Square, and kinda the district sometimes, but it just kind of was perfect. Um, the bikes, a lot of people were planning about those too, but I got really used to them, and, um, on the last day of Pronto, we had a celebratory ride, uh-
Nice.
With, uh, Kathy Tuttle, who was the former executive director of Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, and we had Mike O'Brien showed up, and a lot of other people, and, uh, I, I was leading the ride, and I made the choice to take us all up Pine Street, so, uh-
They were happy with you, right?
To Capitol Hill, and they were not terribly happy with me doing that on the Pronto bikes, and I was like, oh, what, what's the big deal, like, it's just, I, I, cause I did that ride every day.
Right, uh-huh.
Okay.
No big deal.
The, the hairy part of that was taking them on the sidewalk down by, um, King Street Station, because there's no way to really turn from Second Avenue back onto Fourth, so-
Right.
That was fun with, I think it was about 20, 25 people.
Nice.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, you don't wanna put those elected officials out onto the road, be very unhappy.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll- Mike O'Brien can do it, Mike O'Brien can do it the best of his stuff.
Nice.
He can do wheelies, he can do gnawlys if he wants.
Uh, but what's my favorite? I mean, the jump bikes we have now, the second-generation jump bikes are really great, um, really powerful, uh, I'm, I was kind of a fan of not having e-bikes for a while as an option, because it's, it's more, more, uh, affordable. Uh, second-generation spin bikes were actually probably my favorite non-e-bike.
Hmm.
Um, and then, I'm not a huge fan of the Lime's, they're okay.
Yeah.
Um, but-
What's wrong with those ones?
They just, they don't really, they just kinda give you a little pull, and you can't adjust the speeds, so it's just sort of, we're gonna go uphill now, but it's not gonna give you that much of a help, so it's just kinda like, we're going the same speed, whatever.
It felt like it was an awkward start too. Like, it just kinda, like, you start pedaling, oh, we're going, I gotta sit, I better sit down, you know?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think it's really tuned to how much pressure you're putting down.
Correct, yeah.
I don't know, I guess, well, anyway. Um, cool, man, I, I, I use the Lime ones once in a while, just cause I get, uh, certain emails if you use, we'll give you like a discount.
That's true.
So I use my student one.
Nice.
Yeah, cheaper, only on the pedal ones, though, the electric ones, you don't, no discount.
Yeah, I don't even know, I haven't seen the pedal ones around lately.
There's a lot by UW, because I think, I think, uh, you know, Randy, he helps us out on that, that podcast earlier, he was like, he was talking about it.
Yeah, they're, they're all around there, just cause I think only they use it, because of the, probably because of the discount.
And they can, they're young.
And they can. Yeah, they don't know any better. Oh, man, thank you.
Fueled by ramen, right?
Fueled by ramen.
Ramen noodles.
Ah, yeah. My, well, what was your college, like, go-to meal, if you had one?
Uh...
Or young adult go-to meal?
Uh, I, I lived on the Chinese food in the, in the dormitory, uh, cafeteria.
Yes.
College.
Right on, I would go for, I always, I fucking have like an obsession with Raisin Bran.
Oh, cereal's the best.
Cereals.
It's like instant preparation.
Yeah, so good. Yep, yep, and you could keep it in your dorm, just, all you need is milk in the fridge, and this box on your desk, and that's it. A bowl, maybe once.
Three square meals a day?
Three squares.
Alright, shall we dive into this money thing?
Yeah, let's do it.
Alright, what you got?
Alright, so, yeah, do you wanna, you hit me up, you wanted to talk about bike finance, where is that?
The primary thing that, yeah, I thought would be cool to talk about, and it started getting into, you know, what, what money, uh, sources fund bike infrastructure in Seattle, and, and how that's going right now, cause I've been covering that topic, uh, for The Urbanist in terms of the transportation levy that we, we passed a couple years ago, and the problems with that, so, um, but the main impetus was sort of this big article that was in the Seattle Times a couple weeks ago about transportation spending overall in King County.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's breaking down, you know, King County itself, and Seattle, and all the cities in it, and, and ultimately, we're spending 0.2% of transportation dollars per year on bike infrastructure. So for every hundred, hundred bucks that, for every hundred bucks you spend on, on transportation in King County, two dimes is going toward bikes, and I think four dimes is going toward pedestrian projects.
Whoa, so, that's not a lot.
Nope.
No.
So-
And so the people who are saying that bike lanes are costing us hundreds of millions of dollars, and it's a waste of money, should really keep that in perspective-
Okay.
In terms of, of what is actually getting spent on, it's still roads, it's still mostly roads.
Okay.
Light rail, obviously, but that's a whole separate.
So, and, and I guess my question is, are they hurting for dollars? I mean, they're, I mean, nobody's gonna say, no, we've got enough, you know, let's, let's give some to the bikes for a second. Not, not gonna say that, they're gonna take as much as they can get, everybody's trying to grab at a big piece of the pie.
Definitely.
Right, sure, I mean, well, there's always a deficit of what we would like to spend. Um, I mean, Seattle, just to put it in context, doesn't even have a, a maintenance plan for non-arterial streets, so there's literally no plan for when your, your neighborhood street becomes undrivable due to potholes.
Right, ah, that makes so much sense.
They're, they're only-
Unless you live on a greenway.
They're only focused on, yeah, arterials, or neighborhood greenways, like that, so, that's one aspect. You know, we have a, a massive sidewalk deficit in Seattle as well, that would cost, uh, billions of dollars in spend, at our current rate, we will get there in like 1,300 years, um, but somehow we still-
What year is that?
Still always find, uh, find the money for, you know, projects like the Lander Street Overpass, which is just a, basically a freeway bridge over train tracks-
Right.
Costs a hundred and, 120 million dollars.
That's a lot, and there's only supposed to be one side of the sidewalk, right? Like, of the street, there's only gonna be like one side that's, has walking?
That's true, the, the, uh, bridge, which was, was touted by Mayor Jenny Durkin as a pedestrian bridge, only has a sidewalk on one side.
Oh, well, it sounds nice.
But we lose one side of pedestrian traffic.
And four lanes of cars.
Oh.
What about parking?
There's parking under the bridge.
Oh, shit. I didn't, I was hoping you were gonna say nothing.
What about bike parking under the bridge? If, at your own risk.
If you want, if you want that, yes.
You want it. Yeah, cause those are always great places to hang out and park your bikes.
Uh-huh.
Yep. And score.
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
Yeah.
But, but we did pass, we did pass a transportation levy, you know, 2015, we tried, passed Move Seattle, which was basically earmarking around 65 million dollars for bike infrastructure. And so that was the goal, there was, uh, I believe, uh, 60 miles of protected bike lanes, and 50 miles of neighborhood greenways, and so, um, but the cost estimates that were used for that, among other projects in Move Seattle, were pretty low in terms of a per-mile basis.
Um, I wonder why that is, why they were-
Well, it was, it was very optimistic, they, they basically tried to, uh, the current administration at that time, which was, uh, Mayor Ed Murray, and, and Estad Director Scott Kubli, tried to make that pa, package as big as they could. Uh, it now appears, based on reporting I've done on, on the, that, that, the oversight of that, that entire levy. Um, but they didn't know which projects we were gonna build, is one factor, so, that sort of, I think we should, should step back for a second, and, and I'm gonna ask you guys a question, which is, do you know how, how we select what projects to build bike routes on in Seattle?
Colin, go.
No idea.
Okay. How do we choose which ones?
I was thinking like, ah, this looks good.
Yeah.
It's not that-
Random?
Cat grab. Right, well, I mean, there's a lot of bids, and there's a lot of people that say, I want this, I want this, or not in my neighborhood, or, you know, there's a lot of that goes back and forth, and then I figure there's like a, the council, maybe the council, or a tribunal of some kind, that's like, oh, yeah, we'll just do these.
Right, some kind of push and pull?
Yeah, and there's like a big spreadsheet of like, you know-
Yeah.
King County versus Sound Transit, versus the, not versus, but like, here's where things need to go, and then-
Right, right.
Distribute. And so you have those coordination with other projects, like you're saying- So you have those coordination with other projects like you're saying, like Rapid Ride, if we're gonna build that, we, we wanna bike infrastructure. Um, but, and and local officials, like city council members can make their opinions known on when they wanna route and obviously, a project like, say, The Missing Link is gonna really be a, a special thing that's been held up in litigation since um, twenty-five AD, but uh, For the, for the minute, you know, neighborhood projects, how do we decide if we want a bike lane over here and a bike lane over there? Um, obviously, the basis for the overall project selection is the Bike Master Plan, which we passed. Uh, as updated, uh, two thousand fourteen.
So the Bike Master Plan, it provides like a, a layout, like a recommendation of where these things should go and, I mean, probably supported it because they expected that it was gonna be like implemented, right?
Prioritized based on like length of time or resources needed, or this is how mu- I mean, if it's just all about money, then maybe.
The Bike Master Plan doesn't really take that into effect. It basically says, here's what we would have if we had an unlimited number of dollars.
I see.
And so that's the master plan, like if we.
All of a sudden, one day, we're just gifted unlimited resources and money.
And so that's a protected bike lane or a neighborhood greenway or an off-street trail in almost every single neighborhood and where it would go. Um, but how we decide what to pick out of that and actually do with money that we have earmarked um, is where the bicycle advisory board comes in.
Ah, cool.
So that's a, uh, appointed board of both council and mayor selected people. Some who just, you know, and you know, email and say, I wanna be on this board. Um, but representing a lot of different constituencies. And so they're presented every year with a list of projects to prioritize. And Estud provides sort of a rubric on which, which projects rank high because they are connecting existing routes or have high equity scores or what have you, but ultimately, they are the ones who prioritize. We should be doing this, this year and then this later. Uh, and so uh, that's sort of the ground level. Um, and usually they divvy up the geography of the city. Um, so someone, like a working group of four or five members will uh, do North Seattle, Central and South Seattle. Uh, in the past couple of years, the Bike Advisory Board has really taken a slightly different tactic where they really wanna prioritize on getting infrastructure in South Seattle where it's not present. And so that's been a little bit different, where they've been like, we're literally going to do less uh, infrastructure than we would in North Seattle. Yeah, but the hiccup with that right now is that, uh, as of this year with our new mayor, that list is going back to her desk for approval. So we're gonna see what that outcome of that is.
Very interesting.
But the other thing about that is, is that around the same time as we started doing Move Seattle bike projects, Estud came up with a new, uh, a new way to install bike infrastructure, which is, hey, hey, we're repaving this street. And so a couple of streets have been getting repavings and, oh, it's also a Bike Master Plan segment, so if we're gonna do that at the same time, we should just restripe with a bike lane, add the posts. It comes out to a fraction of the cost, cuz we're already doing, already doing the work and repaving it and you have crews out there. Doesn't need to go out to bid multiple times. But that's how you get into a situation like Thirty-Fifth Avenue.
Which one's that? Is this a situation like we, we were talking about up by the St. Mark's Cathedral? Is that like a paving situation or we don't know where that came from?
Uh, so Thirty-Fifth was, is a street in, in northeast Seattle, so over in Wedgewood. That was on the repaving schedule. And it was announced that, uh, they were gonna try and put bike lanes on the street as proposed by the Bike Master Plan. There wasn't gonna be enough room for a protected bike lane in both directions. Uh, particularly cuz there's some bus stops, so it was gonna be a protected bike lane in one direction and a, a paint bike lane. Uh, non-protected in the other direction between Sixty-Fifth and Eighty-Fifth. And uh, the neighborhood had a, uh, quite a large fit.
Yeah, there's some, uh, some real action going on over there. I've heard, um, save Thirty-Fifth and safe Thirty-Fifth. What, what's like, what's, what's going on?
So save, save Thirty-Fifth, save as in keep the same, as in don't change anything.
The status quo.
As in, we don't wanna lose our parking along Thirty-Fifth Avenue. The proposal was to take out a lane of parking on one side of the street. Currently, uh, on Thirty-Fifth, I should say before the repaving, you were not allowed to park on one side of the street during morning rush hour and not allowed to park on one side of the street during PM rush hour. And they were just proposing moving that all to one side. And so it's not a big reduction of parking and there's a huge amount of off-street parking in the neighborhood. Uh, but the ironic thing is, after several, like eighteen months now of of vitriol and back and forths and community meetings and death threats for Rob Johnson, council member and uh, fireworks placed on construction site. Um, uh, equipment uh, as an intimidation tactic.
So people aren't happy.
No, well, okay, so Estud, this was Estud's idea.
It was, yeah, but it was backed up by Rob Johnson. District four representative. Now retiring, yes, um, from the council after one term. He received death threats uh, over this. And so.
This is all within the last, like, year and a half.
And so our current, our new mayor has sent that into mediation. And so there's save Thirty-Fifth versus save Thirty-Fifth. You guys come up with a solution. Uh, the compromise quote-unquote alternative was um, we take away the bike lanes. Uh, and we had a turn lane. Which would not have added any parking back to Thirty-Fifth. And would have provided no safe place for, um, for bikes. And it was basically a, a no-win alternative. No one should be happy with that, except Save Thirty-Fifth went ahead and said they're okay with that. Tells you about, they really just don't want bikes on their street.
Yeah, because it's not the parking now.
Right, oh, they can't park there. They couldn't park there, they're, they can't park there unless they get their way.
There's no alternative that that adds any more parking back. And this neighborhood doesn't need extra parking. They have, it was at forty percent utilization according to a study and there's a huge amount of off-street parking. Um, but.
I, I really, okay, so this is, this is related, but slightly, I have a hard, hard time understanding why parking is so important. Like, why is that, why is that something, like we were talking about measurables? Um, why was parking high, higher priority than like wait times or something? It seems, it feels like it, you know? I mean, I joked about it earlier, but like, car parking is really important to people.
Yeah, you're just seeing that direct connection between a sort of small businesses and the neighborhood. And so there's, there's this perceived direct connection between amount of money spent at businesses and the amount of parking and.
So what's one of the myths then, for that?
The myth is that people who ride by bike spend more on average. And people who ride by transit, uh, spend more on average than people who ride by car.
That's true.
It's, it's true. Um, and that, a loss of parking is not correlated to a loss of, of businesses. I mean, you, a loss of business, I should say, uh, sales dollars. And you all know examples of great businesses that are really popular that don't have very much parking or any parking at all.
We're in one of them right now.
And, you know, Pike Place Market is a great example of that. Even though there's obviously garages nearby and there's always parking close by usually where you're going unless you're going um, to an uninhabited island, I guess, but but you just have to walk a little bit, so, um, but there's this sort of direct connection. We, you need to have people able to hop back in their car after stopping somewhere, but uh, people find alternatives. And that's true for traffic too. So it's sort of that, those are kind of the same, the same issue. Um, resolve the same way.
So there's a lot of hype around, if there's not enough traffic going on, then there's gonna be inefficiencies there, if there's not enough um, parking available, that there's not gonna be enough business spent around there because bikes are getting in the way of cars parking, cars moving through to spend dollars. So, but you just said that that's not true at all.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. I would say, I was gonna relate it to something that we have going on currently, like, what happens if we delete a highway in the middle of the city? Just for like a month and see what, you know, it's gonna be chaos. What happens if we delete a bunch of parking spaces? Oh, it's gonna be chaos, business is gonna go under instead. Wait, why don't we try that? I mean, we did try that and nothing's on fire.
Yeah, these gained traction really quickly and really easily, it would seem with major news medias about uh, closures of this, you know, you're gonna have to adapt.
When there's a threat of snow.
And that.
I mean, the food ser- the food business, like grocery stores soar when, as soon as there's a threat of snow, everybody buys all the water, there's the surge in business and that's all media fueled. Weather channel.
But even with, even with the loss of parking, like, it's we're talking about safety here, so you really can't compare the two things very seriously in your mind. And, and then you have to ask yourself what kind of city we need to have to, to move into a, a carbon a carbon, uh, light or a carbon neutral future. Ultimately, you know, we do have a lot of car-centric businesses in, in, in cities because we've built cities for cars for a couple decades now. Uh, and so.
And Seattle was built around, I mean, Seattle knew, wasn't built before the car, essentially, like, the car came to Seattle. Yeah, it was like right in line.
Sure. Uh, and, but, you know, I'm not saying that you look at a, you look at a, a thing like The Missing Link. And you have a lot of industrial businesses which are, are great, but we look at the future and it's not necessarily uh, going to be those industries that are.
Transportation by vehicle. Motor vehicle.
Okay, something that also is related to that would be, I think, is, uh, the extension of the, the PB, the Protected Bike Lane down Broadway, on Broadway as well. Is that there was a lot of, uh, pushback from businesses there, really concerned that, you know, they're not gonna do so well. That during construction and then afterwards, that it's just gonna suck.
Sure, well, construction's obviously a pain. That's, those are real things. People don't hang out near, near, uh, jackhammering, so that's a real concern for, for every project. Broadway is, I mean, a really interesting example because the Protected Bike Lane that was installed there was installed there to separate users from the streetcar tracks. And so it, it was a safety measure to make sure that people are not biking near streetcar tracks and getting downed, even though unfortunately, we did have someone who was uh, killed that way on a other segment of that streetcar line, so. But if you're on Broadway, like, that's a, that's the busiest pedestrian corridor in Seattle. Like, the busiest pedestrian counts in Seattle's traffic reports, year after year, are Broadway and East Olive Street, like twenty thousand pedestrians a day um, walk by there. And so the argument that bikes are gonna hurt your business, your business is not doing well because of people driving there right now, if you're on Broadway, if anywhere, if anywhere in Seattle. And so, um, I mean, you walk along Broadway and people are jaywalking constantly across the side streets because it's such a pedestrian-focused area, it's just, it's expected even in that area, so. Uh, but ultimately, that issue is tied to whether the streetcar should be extended.
Okay, so there's a little tie-in there with the transit as well. Which we don't have a problem, well, we don't have a problem spending that, but just, I guess it's all coming to an agreement where it's gonna go.
Yeah, just mu- and it's not the same, um, it's not delegated the same way as like the Bike Master Plan, there's a Transit Master Plan, I would or something similar, I'm guessing.
Uh, that's true, yeah. Uh, if you wanna get into that, we could talk about that. Yeah, um, you know, we have these corridors. And so that's a basically adding Rapid Ride, but adding it with priority. Um, and also the multimodal, uh, facilities when it's possible, so, um, bike lanes. Um, on East Lake are part of that. Um, I know that the Del Ridge Rapid Ride is gonna have some sort of bike component to it. Um, but ultimately, it comes down to lack of funds. And so the original Move Seattle projections were very optimistic about federal funding and now we have uh, a terrible, terrible president, so it's a very different picture. And so we've already, we've already downgraded three of the Rapid Ride lines to minimal improvements. And so, um, and even the ones that are remaining are not, not set in stone in terms of what we're actually gonna get, but we'll see. We're still waiting on federal funding, so. But back to the sixty-five million or so that we are getting from the Move Seattle levy to bike projects over this nine-year levy that's supposed to build a hundred and ten miles of bike lanes, you know, how is that going? Um, was sort of what I wanted to talk about. Because, you know, we had this whole thing about Second Avenue Extension, which is just a game-changing facility for a city, like it's there is, kinda, kinda hard to imagine Seattle without it now because it's just such a great facility and it, it's, it's integral for our bike network. But it costs a lot of money to build. And that was one of the first things we built with our Move Seattle money.
Sure did, so.
And so, you know, we ultimately ended up with a figure of like twelve million per mile or something like that. Um, and the question is, where did that come from? Uh, and why was it so expensive? And if you look at that facility, the, the big costs were the new traffic signals. Second Avenue had outdated traffic signals, most of the, some of the intersections didn't even have them, and so pedestrians were basically on your own through Belltown, through one of the densest parts of our city, which was crazy. Uh, a block from my office, you would not, like, you would just avoid crossing Second Avenue. Um, and now it's totally protected and you have to have those full signals where cars can go and then bikes can go and then cars can go again. It's, it's, it's integral to what we know about bike safety. And so having to replace all of those, having to do all the utility work to rip out and, you know, they didn't install very high-quality concrete and, uh, paver, uh, and planter, um, buffers. But ultimately, tr- new traffic signals are the biggest part of that. And so you're paying for pedestrian safety, you're paying for, uh, bike safety, you're paying for the safety of everyone in that corridor. And so it's, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's well-spent. And so but most of that project is not a bike lane.
So I was fascinated how that was, uh, then kind of taken as bike lanes cost eleven million dollars, so you kind of are gonna be, um, um, you know, it's just too much, it's just too much that we can do. Or it just costs too much, so. Okay, so we talked about how it's determined, how this is being spent, what projects, and how Second Avenue was kind of well, just cost a whole lot of money there.
And then Seventh Avenue came on its heels.
Yeah, I remember that, that came up quick.
Yeah, and so that was, that was kind of taking advantage because, um, so when Amazon put in their new buildings, there's three towers.
Spheres too?
With the spheres, uh, the so they basically paid the city for those alleys, so they could build buildings on, on the alleyways permanently. What's called a vacation of that alleyway. And so the payment is in a public benefit. And so they paid for, I believe, streetcar hours, they paid for an actual new streetcar and they paid for a bike lane on the Seventh Avenue side. And so the city's like, well, we're getting this paid for, and so we should connect that, so we can take advantage of that infrastructure. And so that was sort of prioritized above that. But it's also a pretty expensive per-mile cost because of, once again, all those new all those new infrastructure, uh, requirements and they copied the meth, the, like, sorry, they copied the the layout of that Protected Bike Lane where, where it's raised to the level of the sidewalk. So it's a very sturdy, non-street surface bike lane asphalt.
Very permanent, yeah. And it was high quality, as you're saying, yeah.
Totally protected from the, uh, the, the trees nearby. They're not gonna get, you know, uh, ripped up by roots that are moving. And so, um, so they invested the money, but ultimately, it was, it was a very expensive per-mile project, but the people who live in Seattle in ten years are gonna say this was a great investment.
Definitely.
The question is, that's what we chose to do with our Move Seattle dollars for, for bike. The question is, that's what we chose to do with our Move Seattle dollars for, for bike projects.
Okay, so that may, so that makes me wonder then is, um, so. You were saying there's a couple lenses that can be used to determine which projects get funded and where and then, like, when. So one of them being the equity lens, one of them being like the amount of people moving through.
Sure.
So it would, so there's a lot of, a lot of bike lanes coming up around, uh, in the downtown area, but what those would be the most, those would be the highest cost ones, right?
Yeah, the city's really focused on connecting downtown because that's where people wanna go.
Right.
But it's also the most high cost routes.
Right, so if they're doing their miles with the money that they have now allocated per year, whichever. Um, and they choose to do the most expensive ones first, so it's gonna be the least amount of miles to go. But maybe have the highest amount of people using it.
Yeah.
Or you could really use, get like your bang for your buck and just like, do like connect neighborhoods between each other.
Hmm.
And that maybe would cost less and maybe even have, but, you know, all, all the same time, like we're saying, Thirty Fifth is. Um.
Yeah, so that's where you come in here, that's where you get your savings is by taking advantage of those repaving projects. And getting a lot of miles when you can at one time. Um, but doing a whole lot of miles on another, uh, just not, just going ahead and building. Along corridors, it's just very, it's very expensive because you're gonna have to rebuild almost everything.
For sure, and if it's not ready or if it's not time for it to be repaved at that time, even more. That was another point I was thinking about is like putting off projects because. I mean, and this maybe goes back to what you said about the Bike Advisory Board perhaps not giving, saying, well, this building's getting built, it doesn't make sense to. I'm thinking about on Greenwood Avenue, there's bike infrastructure there. And part of that was wait, part of that bike infrastructure getting built was waiting for some of the other apartment buildings getting done first. I mean, they're still having to close it and, you know, Fremont Avenue or Stone Way is another example.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, um, I remember an infamous, infamous text message that was sent by then STOC Director Scott Kubley to Mike O'Brien. Talking about Ninth Avenue North.
Uh huh.
Because that, that was one of, uh, that was one of the bike lanes that, that the council was really concerned about. They had put a proviso, sort of a hold on the pronto expansion money.
Ah.
Saying that you can't expand pronto until you do these, uh, like six bike projects and Ninth Avenue North was one of them.
Hmm.
And there was an infamous text message that was sent by him saying, we're gonna do ninth this year. That was twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen right now and it's not done yet, so.
Right.
It's not even half done because they, they did half of it and then they ripped that out, so.
Hmm.
And we're trying to go for efficiency here, we're trying to go with if it's gonna be paved, let's put down a bike lane. Or if we're gonna put up a bike lane, maybe we'll take it down too.
Yeah, and so the, in terms of the cost, like, the Thirty Fifth project was like, uh, gonna end up being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Per mile.
Seems reasonable, almost.
It was a very low, very low cheap amount.
Yeah.
With the repaving. And the alternative that's being put forward by Save Thirty Fifth is to have a neighborhood greenway.
Hmm.
Um, on another street, but.
Ah.
That means that they are literally taking money from another neighborhood to do a bike project.
Hmm, huh, that, that, that doesn't sound equitable to me, no. Wow.
But the ultimate, the ultimate, uh, point about these high cost. Infrastructure projects that are happening downtown is that we are using up that Move Seattle money.
Hmm, good to know.
Very quickly, and so, uh, the last four years of levy, we're expected to spend almost nothing on bike infrastructure. We will have almost nothing to spend from our levy and so the question is, what are we gonna do because. In order for Seattle to be a leader on climate, we need to build bike infrastructure.
Interesting.
That has to happen and so.
That's what I'm kinda wondering, maybe there's some stuff left over from some of these car projects that aren't gonna work. I don't know, it's like, throws a bone.
Yeah, although they're, they seem to be all underestimated still.
Yeah.
Right? So if there's any extra.
I would hope so, I'd hope so too.
Costs, costs are up for almost every project in Seattle right now due to labor and.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And land, yeah, so something real quick then is that we see a disparity between, you said that there's two dimes for every hundred dollars we spent. So that's a fraction of a percentage being used for cyclists. And yet it's been like reported that we're at a pretty steady three percent here of commuters getting around and it's probably even more who aren't.
Ooh, another dime would be dope.
As what?
Another dime would be awesome.
I know, just one more dime.
I mean, two, but one more would be fine, anyway, continue.
It's more, it's more, either way, it's more, so we see a big like spending disparity there. Um, what kind of, uh, what kind of things do you suggest as like a person who are, suggest, what do you think? Are some, um, solution, like reasonable solutions?
Yeah, so a lot of states, uh, invest money from the state level. In pedestrian bike projects, yeah, uh, Washington doesn't really do a whole lot of that. And so, uh, that's a great source of funding would be increased. State level assistance as opposed to, um, the amount of money they spend on highways.
Okay.
Our state constitution currently requires that any gas tax, uh, revenue be spent on highway projects, which is. A very car centric nineteen fifties era amendment.
Mm hmm.
But there's still options, um, and then a lot of people are talking about impact fees right now, which is basically. Uh, fee charts to new development, um, personally, I'm not a huge fan of that, um, in terms of. Adding more to the hot, cost of housing.
Hmm.
Um. The existing homeowners, in my view, are also benefiting from our high cost of housing and so they also should be asked to pay more, but.
Mm hmm.
But that's an also an alternative funding source in terms of, um, local improvements could be funded via impact fees, but it. It is required that they go toward the immediate area that you're, you're building that in.
Oh, okay. So whether it's being collected.
Then you have to spend there, where it's being collected, you spend there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But ultimately, it's all about what the city prioritizes in terms of. Um, there's always money that comes up in terms of, you know, real estate excise taxes and. Commercial parking fees and it's a matter of where the city prioritizes it, so.
Hmm.
Um. Yeah.
So let me throw out a couple of solutions here.
Mm hmm.
And we'll see which ones, uh, stick, um, let me see, where did I, I got it. I came up with a couple of ones that I think maybe, uh, Colin.
Okay.
Colin once told me about one, uh, that is, there's like, perhaps it's like a mandate, uh, in another country. Scandinavian country.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What do you, tell me more about that.
It was like a dollar for dollar match for road, road and cycling infrastructure. Like if you build a road, you have to build bike lane and like facility for pedestrian too. Like literally one to one and they were trying, they were running out of places to put bike lane, bike lanes. So they just built like expensive bike highways in the middle of nowhere, but people use them because if you build it, people will use it.
Oh, that's great, yeah, no, it sounds like a, a complete streets ordinance with teeth, you know, we have, we have that, but it's. Very easy to get around it by saying, oh, it's not enough room or we have to.
Oh, well, all the standard arguments that we keep hearing, you know, I was wondering why, why they keep showing, it's like, well, it's not good for parking. And I'm wondering if that might be just built into some of the governmental infrastructure.
Yeah, pretty much.
Also, okay, here's another one then, um, how come, well, why not we just like, uh, tab bikes? Or toll, toll bikes?
Did they?
Because we don't pay enough, right?
Didn't they try and do licenses in New York, like bike license plate?
They do, I think they have to register like couriers, oh crap.
No, it's not you, it's the headphones are good, it's not getting recorded.
Yeah, okay.
Janky wire, sorry.
Yeah, can I use the restroom, you guys?
You can do whatever you want.
Do you guys want a beer?
No, we're, I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, we gotta figure out what we were just talking about though, um.
Well, do bikes pay or do cyclists pay for the roads now that they're?
Oh, are we paying for the roads, yes.
Uh, yeah, make, make cyclists pay, uh, car tabs and tolls, that's it. Uh, so that's an interesting idea that's put forward by people who don't wanna encourage cycling, so. Um, we want people to get out of their cars and onto bikes.
Right.
Adding a fee of any kind, it's kinda crazy.
So, okay, back, back to that real quick, um, that, so that was part of the rhetoric, I think, coming from the Seattle Times recently with the, uh, Carmageddon or whatever. Viadoom, all of the key words, but that was a thing.
Jenny Jam.
Yeah. Love it, uh, yeah, but that was kind of it, it's like, oh, you can bike, you can always bike, you can always bike. But, uh, yeah, I can't, I can't remember how that related.
I mean, we, we have to acknowledge, no, not everyone can bike.
Right.
But that's not what we're saying at all.
Uh huh.
And so that's frequently an argument that's, that people use to hide behind what they're really saying, but.
Right.
But no, not everyone can bike, people who need to drive should be able to do that. And so that's why the roads shouldn't be clogged with people who don't need to drive.
Right.
And clogging the bus lanes for people who can't drive, need to use the bus.
Uh huh. No, that's just as bad, I think, too, I mean, I have a friend that, uh, recently just, um, got into a bike crash and has been having to take. Public transit everywhere and is quickly understanding too, like, I can't even imagine being on crutches, trying to navigate the bus system and. I mean, half your day is going to, going between transfers, I mean, this isn't a transit podcast, but, you know. It, it, it all plays into it because they're all intertwined as far as mobility goes.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
So did we nix the idea of tabbing bikes here?
Yeah, kinda.
Okay, that's, well, it was an idea, it was on the table.
It, it was, I mean, it's still on the table, but how do you get people, you don't need a license to ride a bike.
Okay, so we did talk about how cyclists have licenses too.
Yeah, how do you, how do you, uh, make people bike more by charging them money?
Right.
Hmm, yeah, it's almost a negative cycle, huh?
Uh huh.
Get it?
Anyways.
Is that all you were setting up for? I mean, it was a good try. Oh, here was another one, uh, um, bike transit police, you know, we have like the sounder, sounder, trend, sounder police.
Oh, I see, like ticket revenue.
Ticket revenue.
There you go.
For illegal cyclists doing stuff. We could do that.
The bike police force.
Are you saying higher fines for enforcement of traffic laws?
Or enforcing fines for cyclist, cycling laws.
But I think you and I know that, that people who bike. If they break the law, they're doing that for their own safety for the most part.
Mm hmm.
As opposed to people.
I'm trying to dispel it.
Who are trying to get to work and just wanna run red lights, but. Uh, I don't know of any people who bike who are just like, I don't feel like obeying this law.
Because he might die.
Don't do it right, yeah, I'm not gonna come out to the end of that, but if I can get away from this car who's really riding me by. By going through this red light really quick, I'm probably gonna do that, so I don't really want them to be pulled over.
No, I a hundred percent agree.
Okay, good.
Plus the whole helmet law thing we've talked about before on this podcast and, uh, yeah, it's really interesting.
Mm hmm.
There's another thing, I mean, if we're gonna ticket people for not wearing their helmet, that revenue could go to funding bike infrastructure, but they, that's not. That's not enforceable by anyone necessarily, I mean, the city of Seattle makes it low priority because it's not their law.
Thankfully, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not even a risk priority, it's probably low risk.
But it's a cultural perception that I think it really damages, you know, it, it just. It makes it seem, um, makes cycling seem less safe than it is.
Yep.
And it just doesn't, it just creates a barrier for people.
Yep.
That wanna be safe.
Yep.
They can't because the infrastructure isn't safe enough.
Here, here's a revenue stream, how about we charge more for Uber and Lyft?
Oh, I love it.
Put that toward transit. How about downtown congestion pricing or like we call it decongestion pricing?
Ah, I like that better.
I'd be less inclined to put my U-Lock through one of their taillights if I knew that they were, part of the revenue is going to bike infrastructure, that is for sure.
Right, right.
Don't do that, by the way, you can go to jail for that, that is actually against the law, you can go to jail.
Don't touch somebody's car, right?
Well, yeah, that's a good place to leave that.
All right, so what, so how about, um, more like bike shares? Um, people getting on bikes more, they'll wanna ride those more and then they'll realize that the streets aren't safe, right? So people, there'll be more public pressure.
That's true, um, we have a lot of bike share bikes in Seattle and we're gonna get more, so.
Hmm.
Um. But I think that's good, yeah.
That's something, okay, okay, so we're reasonable here.
I don't know if you wanna talk about sidewalk blocking, but.
Sidewalk blocking, tell me.
Yeah, what is that?
But the bikes, the bikes are blocking the sidewalks.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, 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 right. It, and wasn't the jump supposed to be a little bit better for that by giving you a place to lock it to something or encouraging you to do so?
It's not being required until I think May when they're gonna add more bike racks.
Hmm.
Add more bike racks.
But that's, I think, a positive effect, like, oh, we have all these bikes, now there's a problem of parking, well, there's always been a problem of parking, but now it's an obvious, visible problem of parking.
Right, right.
For bicycles, so maybe it'll be easier to get a bike rack.
Yeah.
Or we can encourage, because, okay, so I found out that if you're, if you reside somewhere, you can't request a bike rack in front of your house. But if you're a business, you can and they'll pay for it.
Hmm, there's a lot of business pull around these bike stuff, huh?
It's almost like people who bike to businesses spend money there.
Yes.
It's almost like. Cause they do.
Yeah.
Well, so cool, came up some solutions, um, real quick then, um.
Yeah, I think we got, yeah, I was gonna say, we got like one more thing to talk about, I have city council written down, but.
Sure.
Yeah, you were writing some pieces about the council, can you tell us a little bit about what you were like saying?
Sure, well, in twenty nineteen, so we got seven seats up for grabs of the council during our, uh, district elections. And so it's gonna be a big topic and I wanted to, to talk about.
Well, then.
Which council members are, are sort of on the bike train and which are not, um.
And as we said, timing is very important with these measures, it matters, so.
Sure.
Now is a good time.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna not too much talk about who is running right now, you could have me back later to talk about it if you want, but it's. It's kinda early and, and people haven't really made their stances a hundred percent clear, so I'm not gonna try and suss out based on. On, uh, their statements, but in terms of the sitting council members and, you know, who, what, what we're losing or, or who might stay. Um, you know, Mike O'Brien, who's been on the council for a very long time, is a longtime bike commuter, big bike advocate. Uh, and so he has filed to run again, but it's not a hundred percent certain he's gonna, gonna be, uh, reelected or. Will ultimately go through to the election, but, um, he's always been a great, uh, fan of, of bike infrastructure and big, big push. Um, big pusher on these issues and so, um, supporting Mike is a really big priority for bike advocates.
Hmm.
Um, Councilmember Rob Johnson in District Four, Northeast Seattle is, uh, stepping down and so. That'll be a big advocate, we're losing in terms of bike infrastructure. He's basically the entire reason that Thirty Fifth is still on the table right now, so if we had another council member in that district, we might. Have had those bike lanes painted over a long time ago.
What's going on there, is there, there like some like wish wash, like Washington, like don't know which side to take kinda thing? Or which to support, let them hash it out kind of a deal?
Yeah, so he's pushed it, the mayor has gone into arbitration, like I said, with those two sides and.
Wow.
And so they're going back and doing one more round this month of talking to businesses and seeing which they would like to have, um. The turn lane of the bike lanes and so we're gonna see if we end up getting that, it's not a hundred percent set in stone, but. I can't say without Rob Johnson, I don't think that we would even be having that conversation, so.
Okay.
Um, and the other district representative from, uh, North Seattle, District Five, currently represented by Deborah Juarez.
Hmm.
Um, and so she has been less than skep, uh, less skeptical, uh, I should say more skeptical. Uh, Deborah Juarez has been more skeptical of bike infrastructure than the other two reps up there, Mike O'Brien and Rob Johnson. Um, during budget hearings last year, she questioned whether or not anyone's even using the bike lanes that are being built in her district on Meridian. Uh, a couple other places and so, um. That. Deborah Juarez is not necessarily a full throated advocate of bike infrastructure, I'm not saying that she couldn't get there, but right now she's not a fully on, on team, um. Protected bike lane, so, um.
And yet we dispelled all these myths and we still can't get people on board.
It's true, a lot of people have.
Didn't we just say that it's like a fraction of a percent? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, um. Downtown, we have Sally Bactrow is also retiring, uh, she bikes to work from her condo downtown, a couple blocks.
Yeah.
Um, and so she's always been a, a, a big advocate of cycling in terms of, um, age friendly cities and making sure everyone has the ability to do that, so. Um, I'm not saying that she's been the most effective on that front, um, in terms of really making stuff happen. But she has been a pretty, uh, full throated, uh, defender of infrastructure.
Okay.
And so, but obviously it's really important that any D seven downtown representative has that view, uh, in my view.
Yeah.
Uh, the most important, um. Uh, Lisa Herbold in District One is in West Seattle.
Hmm.
Um, has not been the, a particularly bike centric council member. Um, very focused on parking and, um, arterial pavings in terms of transportation issues. And so, um, it looks like she's gonna coast to reelection, but we're not really putting her in the, the huge advocate category. Um, Bruce Harrell in District Two, which is Southeast Seattle, has not really been that much on board with, uh, the dire lack of infrastructure.
Hmm.
Um.
I know he's stepping down.
He's stepping down as well, the third member and then Shama Sawant, um, in District Three, Capitol Hill.
Hmm.
Um.
That's your council member.
That's true, um. She's been, uh, supportive on specific issues, but it's definitely not her top priority in terms of safe streets, um. But, but she has been supportive of specific issues and is definitely supportive of, of lower income people being able to get around via bike, so that's sort of my roundup. So that's sort of my roundup. Uh, but the, the big issue is that we are losing several key advocates. And so in terms of that funding gap that we are looking at for bike infrastructure. Um, if we don't make sure that it's a big issue in November, in August and November. Then it's looking like we will continue that drought and not find something that will replace it, so.
Hmm.
Um.
When's the money supposed to, supposed to dry up there? Uh, it was pretty soon, right?
We have a, another couple of big projects, we're gonna do the missing link, as you know, as that gets, gets finalized. That's gonna be a big dollar project as well. And so, um, but about after that. And obviously the North Gate Pedestrian Bridge and Bike Bridge, that's gonna be a big bike project. It's not quite in that same category, but that's getting done in, uh, a couple of years. But after that stuff, uh, it's pretty much nil for bike projects for a while.
Okay, okay. So it looks like then that, that this year is the year to advocate for bikes. Put that on the agenda and, huh?
I dig it, right? I dig it. I mean, I think part of our, so we've been writing critical mass, we talk about that. I just wrote down, what if we wrote Thirty-Fifth this month?
On critical mass?
Yeah.
I mean.
It'll bring attention to it.
Sure will. Will we get fireworks shot at us?
I hope not.
I hope so.
You like to live dangerously.
Yeah, there's been a lot of family rides in that area, a lot of bike families.
Oh, cool.
So, um, it'd be great to have those people invited as well.
That'd be awesome.
Indeed. You follow INGA? Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
Cool.
You know INGA?
I know INGA.
You work with INGA way before, way before, way back.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, pay attention to the endorsements as they come out from Washington Bikes. And, um, Transportation Choices Coalition, uh, T4 Washington is their endorsement arm and the Urbanist. The Seattle Bike Blog will endorse, obviously, so.
Cool.
Um.
Oh, yeah.
Tom will do it.
It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big, uh, year for making sure that everyone is on the same page.
Awesome. Yeah, well, we're happy to help promote that and help give voice to these people and these groups and these organizations. That are fighting for, fighting for the cause.
All year long.
Cause maybe.
Yeah, and it's, and it's gonna be all year long. It's gonna take some time.
Uh-huh.
So, um, since you, since the Urbanist is very much involving engagement and that's one of their, like, goals for their. Um, could you, real quick, tell us like something, like what can we do to, what can anybody do to put this on the agenda? To make this priority, to bring this up, like, uh, like this next year around councils? How do we make them, how do we get them to value it as much as we do in those districts?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, so showing up to city council meetings on, en masse, on targeted, targeted places. Um, I'd say committee, transportation, but also full council. Um, you know, encouraging them to do things like fix Rainier Avenue. Uh, not necessarily install bike facilities, but it definitely needs fixing of some kind, uh, sort of a, a great issue to, we can all rally around, I think. Um, but, you know, they just need to see that their, the constituencies that show up at City Hall, you know, neighbors who are angry about parking. Have a counter.
Yeah.
Um.
So be prepared for counter arguments?
Yeah, I mean, and this year is interesting because we do have those council members who are, who are leaving, so they might decide to go a little bit rogue.
Hmm, yeah, because biking is not, it's not a popular thing to take up on, right?
It seems like it, uh, I mean, the case in my mind should be made, but it's definitely something that is shied away from. The council is happy to pass resolutions that don't have any teeth that say we should build the bike network downtown.
Or binding things that make them do it.
But it's really hard for them to, to really clamp down and ensure that's really the purview of the mayor, so.
Yeah, the whole mayor thing, there's a lot of authority there, almost like, um.
And so we do have a new, a new director of transportation, Sam Zibobway is gonna be coming in very soon. He, he has done a lot of bike projects in DC, and so, among other things.
Okay, I biked the C before.
Yeah. It's been there for a long time, so.
They took those bike shares.
Hmm.
Anyway.
Yeah, and so he's gonna be, uh, I think, a great, a great ally. Um, and communicator of what is necessary for the government to do. I think they have the vision, but it's all about the execution.
Well, and they, they've already started by like combining two different, it's like, well, for repaving, might as well put the bike lanes down now. Whoever thought of that, I wanna give them a hug. Cause it just kinda flipped out the whole model on its head. It was like, hey, we're willing to do this extra work for the same cost.
Totally makes sense.
Yeah.
That's, that's the solution. We dig up parts of the master plan bike route, we just like go down there. We just like jack up the, the street, they have to repave it, and then therefore you get a bike lane.
I'm not following.
You don't?
No.
Let's say the street's on the master pan.
Some tactical urbanism out there with, uh, some shovels.
I like to call it guerrilla urbanism.
Can't, no endorsement. Do not endorse.
You can't endorse that. All right, well, on that note, where can we, where else can we find you, Ryan?
Yeah. Uh, on Twitter, uh, at Typewriter Alley is my handle. Um, and I'm on the Urbanist, uh, along with my, my cowork, my coworkers, uh, doing, doing the daily. Dose of urbanism.
Nice. Well, we are, we really appreciate your work and you being here and to talk us through this, really, and.
Really appreciate the invite.
Of course, thanks for being on. Again, we got Ryan Packer from the Urbanist, this is Matthew.
This is Colin.
Colin.
We out. Thanks, thanks, Seattle.
Thank you.